Meeting to order this evening of the Pleasant Grove City Council this February the 18th, 2020. And we welcome everyone who's joined us here this evening. We usually don't have this large of a crowd back here, but we're grateful for the, see all the shining faces that are there with us this evening. And to, uh, we'd like to start our meeting by having a pledge of allegiance, which will be given by Councilmember Williams, and after which we'll have open remarks by Councilmember Jensen.
All rise. Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear and kind heavenly Father, who has before thee this evening, we're grateful to be gathered together as a community in this wonderful building, and we're grateful for those who are gathered this evening and for their achievements. We ask that, again, as we meet this evening, that we moan to be mindful, one of the, one to each other, that we moan to respect each other's comments, that we moan to be mindful of each other. We're grateful for this wonderful community in which we live in and opportunities we have to serve and to reach out to those who may need help. Again, we're grateful for all that we have, and we say the same advice on Jesus Christ.
Amen.
We'd like to, I'd like to have a motion to approval of tonight's meeting agenda.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
Second.
As documented.
We have a, a motion by Councilmember Williams and a second by Councilmember Lamone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move, uh, before we go to open session, we'll move to our presentations this evening. And I think Councilmember Williams has the first presentation that we're going to give out.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Can I have the Pleasant Grove Viquettes come forward and come right here to the podium, the rostrum here? And Nicole Quisenberry, you come up with your coaches. So first of all, welcome. Glad you're here. Thank you for being here.
Come up a little closer up here.
There's lots of room. There you go. So how is, are all thirty here?
Yes.
Very good. Very good. Well, we wanted to come and invite you to our Pleasant Grove City Council. We have some certificates for you, but I wanted to, the signed by the mayor and our city administrator, but I wanted to read a note that, I don't know, Nicole, if you have shared my note with, with your, with the team. Okay. All right. So I'm going to share a little bit of that and then we'll, we'll have you take a picture with the mayor and the city council, and it'll give you kind of an indication of how we feel about you and really how proud we are of you. As a member of the Pleasant Grove City Council, we would like to invite you, your coaching staff, this is directly to your coach, to you, your coaching staff and the Pleasant Grove Viquettes, to come and be recognized by the Pleasant Grove City leadership for tonight. This year, the Viquettes showed exceptional determination, hard work and athleticism, and deserve our recognition as a city. You couldn't be, Nicole, we couldn't be prouder of your leadership, grace, and perseverance as you led this great group of young women to find their passions, hopes, and dreams of dance. You should be very proud that you, of all that you have accomplished in your short time at Pleasant Grove High School. We are. We extend our deepest congratulations to you, your coaches, and your 2019-2020 Viquettes team. The year, the year 2019-2020 will always be remembered as a year of hard work. While it didn't turn out like most had thought it should, it was a very successful year. Very successful year. While I personally believe it will lead to change for future drill competitions, our girls will rise from this defeat and with new determination rebuild their quest for future region and state championships. You as your, you as the coach have instilled upon these girls, have instilled upon these girls to dream big and to have the heart of a winner. As city leadership and as parents, we thank Nicole deeply for her commitment to the girls. You have brought to Pleasant Grove High School a passion for a winning drill team as well as determination and commitment of hard work to thirty young women. In closing, I said, I said this, hard work will always pay off. The payoff may not occur when you'd like it to, but the lessons and efforts put into the cause will always, always be rewarded. So congratulations, Viquettes, on a great 2019-2020 year, and we look forward to many more future years. Thank you. Here is, here is the certificate. Do you want, parents, do you want to take a picture? All right. So why don't you turn right around? Yes.
What color? Oh, okay. Oh, the coach.
The white.
Oh, the white Leva jacket.
I wonder if.
The coach is like a.
A little bit. Okay. Squishin' just a little bit. Sorry, little bit. Okay, one, one, two, three. Okay, we'll take a few, one, two, three. One, two, three. Love you guys.
Good job.
The Viking ship dance was absolutely spot on.
It was first in state.
That one was, that was cool.
Thank you.
It wasn't a Viking, it wasn't a Viking ship dance.
It was a Viking dance.
Okay, now it's time to have the Pleasant Grove cheer team come up. And where, where's your coach? Okay, come on up, get up here.
Shelby.
Shelby, do you want to just come to the mic right here and just hit so the green button comes on?
Oh my gosh, I love this mic.
Yeah.
Okay, the green button is on.
Yeah. And tell us your first and last name.
Shelby Houli.
Okay. And in your words, can you describe how your season went? We know you went to region and you just got back from Nationals last night or today.
Yeah, so this season has had a lot of ups, it has had a lot of downs, but these girls are such fighters beyond fighters. Um, yeah, I'm so proud of them. We, we won region at the Timpview competition and is a, that was a hard category. We were up against nine, ten teams and they combined our division, so we're against like super large teams and so that was a huge victory for us. And then we made it to finals this weekend at Nationals in Anaheim, so that was really awesome too. But man, these girls are, they're tough. They are tough and I'm just so proud of them.
And this is your first year as coach, is that right?
Um, yes, my first year at Pleasant Grove.
Well, we just want to say thank you to you after recognizing different teams and organizations at our, at Pleasant Grove High because you represent not only the school but also our community. So we just want to say thank you for all of your hard work. Do you have a team captain?
We do, right here.
Do you want to step out there for just a second?
Oh, yeah, come on, Ash.
Hello.
And give us a few, what was your, what's your name?
I'm Ashley Davies.
Okay, and give us a little, your thoughts for the season.
Um, it's like crazy thinking of the beginning of the season and the end because at the beginning we looked like a little league team, if I'm being completely honest. And this team has like pushed so hard and like we've lost a lot of girls along the way, but like the ones who stayed, like it really paid off and, yeah.
It's funny how that works, right? When you come together as a team and work hard, it does pay off. So we just want to say thank you and we have a certificate of recognition from the city that we would like to present to your coach so you guys can keep if you want to frame it, if you have a, you know, a display case or whatever you have at the school to, to put this. We just might want to make sure that as with drill and these other teams are recognizing that we really acknowledge and appreciate all the hard work that you've put into your season. And we'd love to get a picture, but first we want to give you a round of applause.
Thank you.
Okay, come on up. Hey, guys, just come up right here and we'll flip around and get a picture with you.
I was telling seven of my friends from high school. I want the captain of the drill team. I don't even know what a drill team is.
You had to ask me to do it too.
Yeah, I don't know what a drill team is.
Shelby.
Shelby.
Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby. Shelby.[805.16]
I'm gonna twist the image a little bit. Okay? And let's see if we get used to that. Now, north is going that way, to the left of your screens. So, north is that way now. And the thing that's gonna help us to locate ourselves is the Boulevard. This line right here, that's Pleasant Grove Boulevard, okay? Again, this is lot, the lot that we just barely created, is along right here. Seven hundred, now it's gonna be to our right. And this is the area, the 2.71 acres that we're talking about. Now, the applicant is proposing two commercial buildings. Each building, as we can see, have a drive-through. Okay, it was designed with a drive-through, which tells us that hopefully it's either a bank or a restaurant, right? And we're going for a restaurant. So, the applicant is here and he can tell us a little bit more about it. But I'm just gonna focus on this a little bit. Each building is on its own lot. This building is 9,000 square feet, and this building is 10,000 square feet. Now, as we talked a little bit about this during the work session, in order for the median to have access, and now this project having a left-in, the applicant was supposed to have at least 10,000 square feet of retail. And as we can see, at least the paths are ready to host 19,000, okay? Now, again, I don't know what these buildings are gonna host. We can ask the applicant later on. But there is room for those 10,000s that we are, that the city is expecting, okay? The entrance, the entrance to this project is gonna be, or the access to this site plan, is gonna be the access that already exists, the same access that Holiday Oil has. Okay, now it's gonna be, it's gonna be a joint access now. This item, of course, has a landscape plan that it was reviewed and approved. And we have a nice view right here that's gonna help us see a little bit how the buildings are gonna look, the elevations of the building. Now, that view is if we were, and I'm gonna go back to this aerial view, just to give us an idea, that picture is if we were standing right where the mouse is, okay? So, we were looking at Pleasant Grove Boulevard in that image. These, both items, the plat and the site plan, they both went through the Planning Commission. Planning Commission received from the DRB, the Design Review Board, a unanimous recommendation of approval, Planning Commission as well forwards to the City Council, a unanimous recommendation of approval for the plat and for the site plan. That's what I have, Mayor and Council. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions?
Daniel?
No.
I'd love to hear from the applicant.
Wait, one question. So, when we're removing the median, but I still see that there is a left, and is that a median, or is that just a designated lane?
This, are we talking about this line right here?
Yeah. No. Yes.
Yes?
No, not the one on the right, but the one on the left.
This is where the turn lanes start up here today.
You want me to?
It's not a median.
So, Diana, as we were looking at how we could modify this to allow for a left-hand turn, we still have to be able to protect other people trying to come out of there. So, that is a curb that extends up on that side, and it'll create this little left-hand pocket, similar to if you were turning at Purple Turtle on State Street. Kinda creates that left-hand turn, and then you can turn into the site. Now, you can see that there's only a right-out. They actually can't turn north on Pleasant Grove Boulevard here, 'cause it's too close to the intersection. And that other curb will actually prevent them from doing that movement. But at least everybody coming northbound on Pleasant Grove Boulevard will be able to access and come into the site.
So, you get to it, so you get to it from the south, and you get to it from the north, but pulling out, you can't go north?
Right. And if they were to do that, I think it's understood, they would probably go through Holiday Oil property, which Holiday Oil, when they heard that, they're like, that's what they do, is they cater people coming through there. And they'll go up to the stoplight at 550 South.
Got it.
And turn left.
This project has a right-in, a left-in, and, but a right-out only. There's not a left-out.
But is there?
Are they gonna cut through the voids backside?
Is there, is there gonna be a road right?
To the south?
They can build a cut-through-the-void area?
Yeah, we talked about that a couple weeks ago.
So, the access is still there off of the Boulevard, and it'll provide access to both developments, both this development, and when the property of the south develops, it will also provide access to that development.
There won't be a city street.
It will not. It's private access for both those. And we reserved our right to access and maintain easements as well.
Right. That's what we were planning for, some access for that parcel as well.
But it won't be through. Right. Okay, thank you, Daniel.
My pleasure, boss. Any other questions?
Any questions, Council?
No.
If not, I would like to have a motion on 10A.
Mayor, do we wanna have the applicant?
Oh, yes. Yeah, would you, have you anything to add to the?
Well, Todd, Todd asked to hear from the applicant.
Yes, I can say.
I'll just, I'll just, 'cause you guys seem curious, so you can, you can just ask. In terms of tenants, it sounds like people want some good food, maybe not banks. So, just to give you guys a little bit of background, I am a restaurateur. I'm a, I'm part of the ownership group of Village Baker that just went into St. John's property. I own Crumble, I own Coconut Island Grill, Ever Bowl, which is like an acai. So, we have, like, eight to 10 food and beverage brands. A few of them will for sure go into this development. And then on top of that, obviously being a real estate developer and balancing that with the actual restaurant side, I have to have a fairly fluid mix, though, a balance of what that tenant looks like. Otherwise, I'll outpark myself, and then nobody will ever wanna come try to eat there. And so, right now, we have LOIs from multiple tenants. We haven't even marketed this project, really, but because, as you guys know, it's just a really great location, great area. And we've changed with the, with the access, with the left-hand turn, that's just made that so much more convenient for everybody to be able to come in and out from both northbound and southbound. So, with that being said, I will balance what the tenancy looks like. Right now, one of the tenants that I'm probably leaning toward is actually a dental office that's, that'll be like 20, 26, 2800 square feet in one of, probably the back building. And then, that'll give me enough that I can do the rest of restaurants. And I can, I could fill all these buildings just with my own restaurants. So, I'll lease it, I'll, I'll open it up and market it for lease, and if there's better tenants than myself, then I'll bring them in, 'cause I need to treat it like a real estate project. But obviously, I'm trying to take advantage and double-dip a little bit, because I think it is a fantastic location. I think my restaurants will do really, really well there, too.
That's great.
We agree. When are you expecting to, as the process continues to go smoothly, break ground and have completion?
Like last year, but you guys are so slow. I'm just joking.
Tonight.
No. It's, we're, we're ready to, we're ready to rock and roll. So, like, this is about a five-month build, TI is maybe another six weeks.
So, fall, maybe of this year? Okay.
So.
Have some ribbon cuttings and?
Pretty quickly, like, we're ready to rock and roll.
Okay, awesome.
We're all foodies, so.
Yes, we are.
Let's go.
Okay.
Start stamping.
Hey, congratulations on your brands. Those are great.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. It's good news.
Yep.
Okay, we'll go back to, ask you for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a two-lot final subdivision plat called Dana Point Plat C on property located approximately 671 South Pleasant Grove Boulevard in the Grove Zone Commercial Sales Subdistrict.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Williams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. A second by Councilmember Bullock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, now ask for a motion on 10B.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve a site plan for two multi-tenant retail building on property located at 633 and 671 South Pleasant Grove Boulevard in the Grove Zone Commercial Sales Subdistrict.
A motion by Councilmember Anderson.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Lamone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. They'll now move on to?
Just wait, one more thing. A drive-up cookie and/or a sea bowl sounds a lot better than a drive-up dentist.
Okay.
Eat your cookie and then go to the dentist.
Hey, thank you for being part of Pleasant Grove. Now, have Daniel return to the podium to consider for approval a two-lot final subdivision plat called Void Plat D on property located approximately 452 South Pleasant Grove Boulevard in the Grove Zone Commercial Sales Subdistrict in the Sam White Lane neighborhood. And also goes with that is to consider for request, Mad, how do you say, the Madscod Merchant for a site plan for single-story, single-tenant restaurant building on property located at approximately 452 South Pleasant Grove Boulevard in the Grove Zone. Daniel?
Mayor, Council, now let's travel a little bit up north, and we're gonna find the hotel that we have right now in our city. And this item is similar to the last one. We're gonna talk about first, the subdivision, plat, the creation of two new, new chunks of land, and then we're gonna see a site plan in one of those lots, okay? So, again, just to give us an idea where we're located, this is the hotel, this is our Pleasant Grove Boulevard, and we're gonna talk about the 1.78 acres that were, that were left empty at the north of the hotel. So, that's where we are located. Again, this is in the, plus, our zone for Pleasant Grove is the, the Grove, and it's the Commercial Sales Subdistrict, similar to the other one, okay? It's important to mention this, because we do have requirements here. They're not as, 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 um... Yes, as the interchange. Thank you so much. Always learning a new word, stringent, right? Stringent. They're not as stringent as the ones in the, in the interchange, but we do still have rules right here for landscape, we have rules for design and materials, okay? So, again, what the applicant is proposing, first of all, is the creation of two-lots subdivision, the voice of division plat D, okay? And that's gonna be two lots. Can take a look at that one. And again, the hotel will be located right here on the south portion of it, and we'll create Lot 7 and Lot 8. Lot 8 is about a little more than half an acre, and this is where the site plan is gonna be located. This is the corner lot, Lot 8. The site plan is gonna be for a, a fish type of a restaurant. It's called Captain D's. This is the, the site plan. I forgot to mention the name of the applicant. I promised, I was gonna say it right. So, here it goes. Maxud Merchant. I practiced.
Is that right?
I know the pain. I know the pain when someone does say it in Korean, right? So, that's why I was practicing. That's the site plan right there. As we can see, the Lot 7 or the lot is gonna be left empty for future development, but it's already subdivided, and we're gonna use right now Lot 8 for the site plan. Again, that one also has a, a drive-through that goes through it, obviously a drive-through. And it's a restaurant about 27, uh, let me see. Yes. Thank you. 2608. This project, I have a very image right here that shows the, the landscapes. It's always to be interesting how every architect has his own way to draw and to, and to show their colors. But this shows where the trees will be located, and it gives us a very clear view of where the drive-through is gonna go, where the entrance of the restaurant is gonna be. So, that's what is proposed. Have a picture of elevations, and that's our new friend Captain D's in town, okay? This item as well, receive a positive recommendation of approval from the Design Review Board. They have to work a couple things, and then the applicant, the project receive a positive recommendation of approval. Both the site plan, as well as the plat, receive a positive recommendation of approval, a unanimously, unanimous one from the Planning Commission to the City Council, okay? So, that's what we have so far, Mayor and Council.
Okay. Any more questions for Daniel?
I, I.
Okay, if that's what you wanna hear from, so.
I just have a quick?
The applicant like come forward and?
I have a question, and maybe the applicant can answer this, but this, the Captain D's, that's a national chain, is that right?
Yes, it is.
Will this be the first location in the state of Utah, or is there others in Utah?
This would be the very first one in, in the state of Utah. They have 600 locations nationwide.
600?
So, I've eaten it, Mayor, I've eaten at a Captain D's.
Have you?
I have. And?
Go back again.
I would go back again.
Okay.
Yeah.
They have grilled items, grilled menu items. They also have fried, they have chicken tenders. It's, they're focused on value, quality, and service. The brand is recognized nationwide there in 24 states. This would be the 24th state in their portfolio.
That's wonderful.
Captain D's also used to be a client of mine. That's how I, I, when I was with a survey company, I'll just leave it, I'll leave it at that, and Employee Survey, Customer Survey. And I actually have been to your corporate offices as well, well, the?
Nashville.
The national, the national corporate offices of Captain D's. So, yeah, good, glad you're here.
Yeah, I'm excited to bring the brand. I'm the one that brought the Popeyes Chicken brand in this market as well.
Oh, well done.
I'm blessed and?
I'm a Popeyes junkie, Mayor.
I know.
What?
Oh, yeah.
Be in the city.
It's my weakness. Okay?
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome.
So, one more question. Where, where else are you planning in Utah for some other?
I have secured, this is the second site that we are working on. The first one we have secured is right next to Adobe in Lehigh.
Oh, okay.
Over there, there's quite a bit problems with the utilities and stuff, so that might take about two to three years to bring that utilities and the road infrastructure for the Captain D's. So, we thought this one would be the first one, otherwise that, we were working on the Lehigh for long.
Well, we're very competitive, especially with Lehigh, so we would like to be the first one.
Perfect, thank you so much.
What's your timetable? Do you got?
Oh, we are planning on opening September 1st.
Oh, very good.
Wow.
Wow, we are, we are having a good night tonight.
It is a good night.
Hopefully, you guys will love this brand. It's a seafood brand, it's very reasonable. People in Utah, the reason why I selected this brand over all the other brands that I was working with, is their quality is amazing, and the price point is very reasonable. In Utah, we have big families. People get scared to go to the seafood restaurant, thinking that it's gonna cost a lot, like $18, $20. Here, you can have a meal, a nice meal, a complete full meal under 10 bucks.
Wow.
So, I think it's gonna?
It'll go very well here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Will you pronounce your name for us?
Sorry?
Will you pronounce your name for us?
Maxud Merchant.
Maxud. Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Maxud.
Thank you once again, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, if I could ask for a motion on 10? 10C?
Mayor, I make a motion for approval of a two-lot final subdivision plat called the Void Plat D on property located approximately 452 South Pleasant Grove Boulevard in the Grove Zone Commercial Sales Subdistrict.
Councilman Jensen has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember, which one of you wants?
The guy that's eating there.
Williams, Councilmember Williams, the one that's eating there. And second it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now go to, ask for a motion on 10D.
Need a motion.
Oh, we, we need a motion for?
For D?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve the request for? Maxud, is that correct? Thank you. Judge? Merchant for a site plan for a single-story, single-tenant restaurant building on property located approximately 452 South Pleasant Grove Boulevard in the Grove Zone Commercial Sales Subdistrict. Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lamone, a second by Councilmember Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we'll move on to 10E. I thought Marty was coming up to?
Thank you.
Make a motion. So, anyway.
Three restaurants in a night. That's a good night.
All right, we were approached a number of months ago by two property owners that are adjacent to a piece of property that the city purchased for a storm drain detention facility. This property is approximately 2.1 acres, and sitting here right behind Stone Gate, as you can see. And as we kinda looked at that, one of the questions, they asked if there was any excess property available that the city would consider. And so, we, we delved into that a little bit more and tried to determine what area, if we needed all of that area for the size of the detention facility that we're needing, whether or not would be willing to divest ourselves of some of that property. As, as I looked into that and, and worked on a concept of that with Horox, as far as for the size that we needed, about two-acre feet of detention, in two acres, which means it's, it's got a lot of curvature to it, but that's one foot deep, essentially over two acres, right? So, we had a little bit of excess property that we felt that we could divest ourselves of in this area, and still be able to accomplish the purpose of the property for a detention facility. And as you can see in the exhibit, which we apologize, for some reason, it wouldn't download into the packet.
I'm sorry, Marty, I must have missed it. How big, how big's the property?
The property is 2.11 acres.
Okay.
And what we're looking at is, looking at about .58 acres. There's two parcels that would be created in this, one that would go here to the Friars, one that would likely go here to Stone Gate, .4 acres and .18 acres, as you can see there. So, that's what we're looking at, surplusing tonight. And then, we feel that we've got things covered with regards to the detention needs through that. There are a number of easements that will be reserved through the property, 'cause we do have a storm drain line that comes through here. We have a storm drain line that comes through here currently. It'll just tie right into the top of the future detention facility, but we felt like as long as those easements were preserved, that we could, there shouldn't be any issues with regards to the property, so.
So, our main reason for having it was, was storm drain retention?
Storm drain detention facility, yep.
Okay. And we'll just, and we'll, what you're doing is, we're just subdivising, subdividing that piece with a future sale, right?
Yes. So, and, and they are, they will be required to combine these parcels into their parent parcel, and we can't subdivide without joining them into that, without going through the subdivision process.
Oh, I see.
And Stone Gate will have to amend their current subdivision plat to include this one into theirs, but that's all in the agreement for the purchase as well.
Okay. Basically, it's gonna be open area, is that?
I, that's what they intend, but I don't, we, as long as we reserve our easements, we're, we're okay with that. But for us, it will be open for the rest of the property. It's going to be a detention facility, so.
And, I mean, they have the zoning requirements and whatever, but I think the intentions they've told us is, for the Friars, it's to have their animals graze, and for Stone Gate, it's to have maybe some little therapy farm or something down there for, for people. So, whether that actually happens is gonna be up to them, but that's what they've told us their intentions are.
Well, Marty, you say you've already, so your outlet would be the one going to the south, then, is that?
Yeah, the, currently, this water, so there is already an existing smaller detention facility that sits right here, and that will be built into a much larger facility that will encompass most of this property here. The discharge comes out and then crosses 2,600 north right here.
Oh, okay.
So, this will help lessen the amount of flows from that upper area above here that comes into that, that'll retain it to us, I mean detain it to a smaller flow outlet than currently is there, so.
You have a big change of elevation right there as well.
Yeah, but this is a pretty deep swell between those two parcels. It's a pretty good dip there, but it's good to put in a dam and build up some water and, and so it's great property for us.
Isn't that laying the old Manella Creek here?
Yeah, that's where the old drainage channel came down through there. Yep.
Yeah. That dates us. Yeah.
Yeah, I went back as far as I could on Google, and it didn't even touch it, so.
And they went back to 1876.
Thank you.
I'll note that, okay?
That was before that, actually.
Any other questions for Marty?
Thanks, Marty.
Okay. I would ask for a motion on, to consider for adoption Resolution 2020-010, declaring surplus property, two parcels of real property, parcel one consisting of 18 acres and parcel two consisting of .14, .40 acres, located approximately 800 west, 2,600 north in Pleasant Grove. Do I have, someone like to make that motion?
Mayor, I'll make that motion for adoption of Resolution 2020-10, declaring a surplus of two parcels of real property, parcel one consisting of .18 acres, and parcel two consisting of .40 acres, located approximately 800 west, 2,600 north, Pleasant Grove, Utah County, Utah County, Utah, and said property and providing for an effective date.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bullock. This will be a roll-call vote.
I didn't, I didn't read that right.
You didn't read it right?
I didn't read all of it. I didn't wanna get in trouble, so I just wanna amend Pleasant Grove, Utah County, Utah, and authorizing the mayor to execute a sales agreement with adjacent property owners for said property and providing for effective date. There, I feel better now.
Okay. I'm sorry, I think I cut you off, Councilmember Jensen. I'll try to refrain from doing that next time.
I got ahead of myself.
Okay. So, roll-call vote, we'll start with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. This is unanimously. We'll now move on to 10F. Consider for adoption Resolution 2020-011, authorizing the mayor to declare a 1996 BGTX 20-foot trailer and a 2017 PAR, PAMR trailer, and a 2006 Freightliner Twamco HC80 Street Sweeper in excellent condition as surplus, and directs that they be disposed of according to the city's policy for disposing of surplus property.
Mayor and Council, as far as the two trailers go, the police department has two box trailers. One is an old trailer that's in need of quite a bit of maintenance that we don't use anymore. It takes up a spot in the back, back parking lot here. The other is a large trailer that Chief Smith bought a couple years before he left that's very heavy and doesn't pull very safely with our half-ton trucks, so it sits at the pipe plant. We've talked with Lone Peak Trailer, and they would be willing to swap us for a brand-new trailer that's a little bit smaller, that actually has ramps, so we could pull our motorcycles into the trailer and transport them on long distances if we go to funerals or training, stuff like that. So, we'd like to trade those, the two we have for a newer trailer that would pull a little bit better with our trucks if we could do so.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief on this, Joe? If not, have Marty bring us up to date on his well-used street sweeper.
Yeah, the street sweeper has seen its days, and I think it's ready to move on. We currently have a new street sweeper ordered, and will be here hopefully in the next few months, I believe by May is when it's supposed to be delivered. So, we would like to surplus this one and see what we can get out of it. There's not gonna be much. The whole back bin has been corroded enough that it's, it doesn't hold air, it doesn't keep suction. We have to keep welding and welding and welding about every time we use it, so it's time to move on with it, so.
move on with it, so...
Didn't, didn't we buy a Street Sweeper recently?
Yes.
So this is just the...
So we got to wait for it to be delivered. It hasn't been delivered yet.
Okay.
It takes about six months delivery on those, and so it...
Wow.
It should be here again in May, I believe.
So this is just the other, this is the one that we're replacing?
This is the one that we're replacing, yeah.
Is this a service that any cities contract out?
Yeah, Street Sweeping, there is a cost, a fairly significant cost to that, but yes.
Is it?
And we did, as you know, this fall, we did contract that out to go and street, sweep all the streets. We did it twice for the whole city, so...
So it's, it wouldn't be worth it to, to continue contracting it out? Okay.
We, we need a Street Sweeper regardless, just for messes that happen.
Okay.
And, and so we've got a kind of a part-time guy that kind of goes around. Our guys, when they're on call, will go and drive the Street Sweeper as part of their duties as well, and to make sure that that's done. And it's been not as effective in the last few years just because of the Street Sweeper has constantly been breaking down and having problems with that, so we feel very comfortable with the new one that's coming. It's going to be a lot better.
But it is an option if we needed to get it done quickly or to do more, like we did in the fall, that's always an option to get, okay?
Yep, we've contracted that out before, so we have a relationship there as well, and...
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
No other questions? I'd entertain a motion on 2020-011.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2020-011, authorizing you, the mayor, to declare a 1996 BGTX 20-foot trailer, a 2017 PAMR trailer, and a 2006 Freightliner Corp Timco HC80 Street Sweeper as surplus and directs that they be disposed of according to the city's policy for disposing of surplus property.
We have a motion by Councilmember Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second. I'll let Judge have it.
Second by Councilmember Bullock. This will be a roll call vote. Pay attention, we'll go the other direction now. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. That concludes all of our action items for vote this evening. And is there anything more we need to review or discuss on our March 17, 2020 city council meeting?
Right now, we just have work session items. We have our beautification committee coming and our arts council coming to give a report on their ongoings, and then we have on here the Les Mis Cast, and so I don't know who arranged that one, but they're coming.
That was Eric.
Yeah. I don't know the details on that.
That was just Sidney.
Okay, so it says on our agenda that they're coming, so I don't know what they're doing, but they're, they're going to be here, and then we have Kim, our victim advocate,